All right, now that all council members are present, we will reconvene the City of West Sacramento regular meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and the West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency and West Sacramento Financing Authority, April 6th meeting. And I will accept a motion to reconvene from our closed session. So moved. Right, council member early moved and Mayor Potemar Roscoe seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early. I. Councilmember Akala.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Mayor Potemar Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye.
All right, and next we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Ms. Jennifer Thayer. Thank you so much for being here. She is the President of the Board of Directors for Yolo Crisis Nursery. All right.
Hey, everyone. Hi, everyone. Pleasure to be here and I'm glad to lead this. So here we go. I pledge allegiance. Excuse me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much, Jennifer. We had special effects today going on, so. Next, I will have the city attorney, please provide a report on closed session.
Ma'am, the council met in closed session with its real property negotiators to discuss the three parcels identified in your agenda. Council also met with its labor negotiators to discuss bargaining with the Police Officers Association and Firefighters Local 522. No action was taken.
All right, thank you. And next we'll have the city clerk. Provide a presentation regarding today's meeting.
The city council meeting will be conducted via teleconference pursuant to Government Code Section 54953E. City Council adopted Resolution 2244 earlier this evening, April 6, 2022, confirming that a statewide state of emergency continues to exist because of COVID-19 virus pandemic and that the Yolo County Public Health Officer continues to recommend measures to promote social distancing. Members of the public are asked to watch the meeting livestream on the city's website via Waveable Channel 20. Public comment may be provided using Zoom or through email by emailing the comments to cityclerk@cityofwestsacramento.org. Public comments are sent via email before 5:30 PM. Will be provided to the city council and posted on the city's website. Public comment given on Zoom is limited to three minutes and can only be made on matters within the city of West Sacramento's jurisdiction. City Council cannot take action or deliberate on items that are not on the agenda unless there is an emergency and the need to take action arose before. I'm sorry, the need to take action arose after the agenda was posted. If you would like to provide comment, please press the raise hand button or press star nine on your telephone. Speakers will be called on in the order that their hands are raised. Please leave your hands raised until you have finished making your comment. When your name is called, the clerk will unmute you and will notify you when your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is under General Administration Function Part One is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda Within the Jurisdiction of the Council. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak at this time?
If you'd like to make a comment on a non-agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. Gina Deling, you are first.
Good evening, Mayor Guerrero, council members, city manager Laurel. I'm Gina Delighten, Executive Director of First Five Yolo. As you know, First Five serves Yolo County's youngest children and their families to ensure that our children are healthy, safe, and ready to learn. On the night that you are adopting a Child Abuse Prevention Resolution, I'm excited to announce that our new program, Welcome Baby, will be available for all medical and uninsured births. Services include a nurse home visit immediately postpartum, followed by community health worker visits addressing pandemic-related impacts on child and maternal health and wellness, and coordinating flow into more intensive services. I'm pleased to announce that Welcome Baby has officially launched and patients are eagerly accepting services. In the first three weeks, 48 patients were enrolled, and that's about a 70% acceptance rate. The first nurse visits have begun as babies are born and our first hospital, Sutter Davis, is fully onboarded. In fact, Sutter was so excited for services, they jumped in several days before their official go-live date. Integration of Elica Health has begun such that Welcome Baby links West Sacramento residents who give birth outside of Yolo County. We'll be looking to phase Indignity Woodlands soon. Welcome Baby is a collaborative between First Five Yolo and implementation partners Communicare Health and Yolo County Children's Alliance. It's an honor to work with these agencies as a Welcome Baby team. This new effort attaches to First Five Yolo's Child Project, Road to Resilience, an existing in clinic and home visiting program with proven performance outcomes, including protection against child abuse and support of child and maternal wellness. County ARP and First Five Yolo Dollars are supporting the first two years of this critical program, and we are looking to our cities to support year three. City of Davis recently allocated their ARP dollars for one-third of the third year, and we look forward to exploring options for partnership with the City of West Sacramento to help complete the program. We would welcome the opportunity to brief the council or city staff on Welcome Baby and First Five Yolo's efforts to prevent child abuse and address the health and wellness disparities of COVID impacts. Thank you for your continuing commitment to West Sacramento's youngest children and their families and for your time tonight.
Our next speaker is Alex Hirsch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Alex Hirsch and I am speaking tonight because I have the privilege of serving on the Board of Directors of the West Sacramento Friends of the Library. The West Sacramento Friends of the Library, a nonprofit organization made up of community members dedicated to raising funds and providing financial support to the Arthur F. Turner Community Library here in West Sacramento. The library is a true community asset for West Sacramento, serving people of all ages and neighborhoods across our city. As you may know, this week of April 3rd to April 9th is celebrated across the country as National Library Week. This year's theme is Connect With Your Library. The Yolo County Library offers several ways for West Sacramento community members to connect with our library. Library patrons can check out a wide assortment of materials and services, including a variety of interactive kits, board games, Chromebooks, and hotspots. Library patrons can also connect to the library digitally from home, work, or school, and enjoy the library's ebook and e-audiobooks through Overdrive. Community members can visit the library in person on Merkley Avenue, online at www.yol countylibrary.org, or on social media at the social media handle @YoloCountyLibrary. And to learn more about the West Sacramento Friends of the Library or make a donation, please visit our website, www.wsfol.org. On behalf of the library and the West Sacramento Friends of the Library, I want to thank the city for its generous support. I encourage council members to help spread awareness of library and West Hall events through your social medias and at community events, and I hope to see you all at the library very soon. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Grahalba.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Actually, let me get my clock out here. I would, I'd love to give a land acknowledgement, but instead I'd like to use my time to share a small incident that happened. And that was that last week, I was out putting up political signs. As you know, we have a June election coming up, and I'm out there putting up signs in favor of my candidate, who is Cynthia Rodriguez, that I'm favoring. And, and so the convenience store owner had given me permission to put a sign up. And on Sunday, I get a call that I needed to go pick up my sign because the convenience store owner had gotten a call, and it seemed rather threatening. And all I was told is that, you know, sorry, Maria, but the DA's been here for 16 years and I just don't want any problems with him, and can you come and pick up your sign? And so I just, my heart sank. But I did report this to the FBI. I did report this to California DOJ. And, and I'm really disheartened that we live in a county where this happens. And I promised the owner not to give his name and the convenience store location, but it's just sad that this happens. And so, thank you for this opportunity, and I do want, this is very important that this be entered into the public record. Thank you.
We have no other hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is our Consent agenda, item 2 through 6, and I will pull item 5. And are there any other requests for items to be pulled? No, okay. And for item number five, that item is Consideration of Proclamation of the West Sacramento City Council Recognizing April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I would like my colleague, Mayor Potemar Corina Roscoe, to read the proclamation. I also want to recognize the Mayor Potemar's work and her passion for child abuse prevention. I know that she's been a dedicated attorney, seeking to, you know, seeking justice for those that have been inflicted egregious harm, and really grateful for that. We wanted to allow you for the opportunity to be able to speak on this or read the proclamation, and then we'll go to our speakers thereof. Oh, you're muted.
Well, that was a fantastic thanks to the mayor that we missed. But on behalf of the City of West Sacramento, I offer the proclamation proclaiming April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And it reads, whereas child abuse and neglect continue to pose serious threats to our nation's children, and whereas adverse childhood experiences, cases such as physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, neglect, and parental stress or illness can have short and long-term outcomes, including a multitude of health and social problems. And whereas early evidence-based prevention and intervention efforts are less costly than trying to fix the adverse effects of child maltreatment, both in human and financial terms. And whereas, at the start of the pandemic, children had decreased access to mandated reporters, such as teachers and medical providers. Thus, it is important to note that even more children in the West Sacramento may have experienced abuse and or neglect in 2020 and 2021. And whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community issue, and we all have a responsibility to nurture and protect our children and help ensure that they become healthy and productive adults. West Sacramento is fortunate to have people and organizations who work to bring awareness to this issue and to help children and families dealing with abuse and neglect. And whereas the Yolo County Children's Alliance was founded as the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Yolo County in 2002, and for the past 20 years has continued to coordinate county efforts to prevent and respond to child abuse and neglect. YCCA's child abuse prevention efforts are fostered by contributions of the following agencies and organizations. Communicare Health Centers, Empower Yolo, First Five Yolo, West Sacramento Police Department, Yolo County CASA, Yolo County District Attorney's Office, Multidisciplinary Interview Center, Yolo County HHSA, Yolo County Office of Education and Yolo County Probation. And whereas West Sacramento residents are encouraged to support child abuse prevention activities in their communities by joining the new CAPC campaign, Building Youth Resilient, which engaged empowered youth to directly inform the process of curating a resource guide toolkit. Building Youth Resilience provides resources for youth and their parents and caregivers to promote resilient self-care and mobile growth. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City of West Sacramento does hereby recognize the month of April 2022 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month. Proclaim this sixth day of April 2022. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, sorry, you're on mute. Thank you. Another, another situation again. So we have an opportunity to listen from our community partners, and I would like for them to have the opportunity to speak and then allow for our council members the opportunity to share their thoughts about April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And first, we have a couple of representatives in the community who will be receiving the proclamation, and then we'll also allow for others who are here to speak regarding the importance of Child Abuse Prevention Month for their organizations. And so we will start with Tessa Smith with the Yolo County Health and Human Services Agency, Community Health Branch, and then Lupita Lugo with the Child Abuse Prevention Council, coordinated with Yolo County Children's Alliance. Madam Clerk, can you allow Tessa to? There you go.
Thank you and good evening, all. Thank you so much for recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. On behalf of the Yolo County Child Abuse Prevention Council and Yolo County's Children's Alliance, and just thank you so much for supporting children and families today and for making it a priority in your work. Thank you for identifying all the agencies across our county that come together to serve and protect the most vulnerable community members that we have, and that's our children. So we are really pleased to accept the proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month from the City of West Sacramento. And we're also very excited to share that our offering from the CAPC and Children's Alliance is to release our Building Youth Resilience Guides. Now, these guides are for youth and parents or caregivers and provide real resources that promote resilient self-care and personal growth. We are going to be distributing hard copies of these guides via our school system. So all of our middle school and high school students will receive these guides that they can hold on to and take home. We will have them available in English, Spanish, and Russian, which are the threshold languages for our county. Additionally, you can find an extended version of our Strong Families, excuse me, our Building Youth Resilience Guides at our Strong Families Yolo website, which is www.strongfamiliesyolo.org. And you'll find more resources and practical ideas for everyone in our community to support families in Yolo County and help prevent child abuse and neglect. Again, on behalf of the CAPC and YCCA, we want to thank you very much.
Guadalupe Lugo is next.
Well, thank you so much for having us today. As Tessa explained, what we're doing with our campaign and the guides that we created for this year's Child Abuse Prevention Month. Along that, along with that, what we're also doing is providing a toolkit for the community to get involved in spreading awareness. And so one of the things that we can all do is, the easiest thing, is follow YCCA's social media pages because we're constantly posting events and information and websites specific to our Youth Resilience Guide. And we also have a community event that we also posted throughout April so that families can get together and, you know, just spend quality time. And, and there's also other ways that you can help spread the word on that, in that toolkit as well.
Thank you, Guadalupe. And then if there are any others that I would like to speak, I think we have Jennifer, who's here? Jennifer, say.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. So I'm Jennifer. I'm the Board President for the Yolo Crisis Nursery, and I'm very excited to be speaking with you all and especially in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Month. The Yolo Crisis Nursery provides early intervention services in a safe environment to nurture healthy and resilient children, strengthen parents, and preserve families. We provide 24/7 care for children ages zero to five when parents are experiencing a serious crisis. And during that time, parents are connected to wraparound services and work closely with a case manager to solve the crisis that brought them to our door. We follow families for a year to ensure that children remain safe and healthy. We have been helping to prevent child abuse in Yolo County for the past 21 years, and during this time, we estimate we have served about 8,500 children. Our clients are diverse and we serve every corner of Yolo County. Last year, 20% of our clients came from West Sacramento, which was twice as many as the year prior. In fiscal year '21, we provided resources for a little over 1,000 children and 832 families throughout the county, which was again about 67% more than the year prior. We have an amazing team of individuals that help our families be successful and stay connected with their children. 99% of our cases do not end up being referred to Child Protective Services. Our vision is that every child in Yolo County grows up in a safe, loving, and stable home. We appreciate West Sacramento's partnership and thank you for proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other hands that I'm missing on this item?
Anybody would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand at this time. I see no hands raised, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Bring it back to council now, propose the public comment. And council member Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm grateful this resolution was brought before us. When I served as a trustee for Washington Unified School District, we had two families where the children were murdered by their fathers. In both cases, the mothers were victims of domestic abuse. Our community experienced shock, disbelief, heartbreak, and despair. Tandle light vigils for help to honor and grieve for these innocent children. The community searched for answers. How could a parent commit such a horrible crime? Protecting our children is a natural instinct. How is a community, could we possibly help prevent this from happening again? The answer came from our collective communities to educate ourselves by providing support for children and parents through after-school activities, parent education classes, and mentoring programs. Being vigilant and being aware of red flags. If we see unexplained injuries on a child or an adult, if we notice depression or fear of a certain adult, if we observe secrecy or hostility in a child, finally, if you suspect abuse, to report it. Thank you, Councilwoman Roscoe, for all the work that you do. You said the responsibility falls on all of us. And I'd like to mention that at our two-by-two, we heard from Superintendent Hildreth that WSD planning to open wellness centers on each of our campuses. And this is to support the mental health and safety of our students. Thank you.
If you council member, I'll call it. Councilmember Early.
This is such an important, I think, issue for us to take up and to take time to acknowledge. And I think that's the, I think that is one of the important things, right, that we heard was part of what we're here for, is to lift up, to raise where you can. You see something, say something, and to get the word out. During COVID, we saw significant increases in child abuse and neglect. Children were isolated in homes and didn't have the escape that they had before COVID, which was school. We heard Councilmember Alola talk about the fact that we will now have wellness centers on Washington Unified School District, and these are going to be so important because our schools really are the hub, a community hub, for not only our children, but also our families. When I think about our role, not only lifting up and acknowledging for this month, but the role that the city council plays and the role that we play in supporting organizations like YCCA and others that support families, that is one of the things we play and can do in order to prevent child abuse and neglect. And then the other thing that we can do is through the work that, that we do in partnering with Washington Unified School District. But it's also things like alleviating poverty. It's also things like providing job supports and job training and supporting families to address the issues, stressors, that impact parents. I am so fortunate and grateful that we are acknowledging this and also so fortunate and grateful to be on the council with you all who know how important these issues are and who are doing the hard work. And then obviously with the city that supports organizations like we heard from today. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Early. Councilmember Potemar Roscoe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to take a moment to thank Jennifer and Gina and Guadalupe and Tessa for addressing the council and thank you, Madam Mayor, for inviting them to be here with us tonight. The work cannot be, it's just so important to acknowledge. And thank you also for the kind words of my colleagues. I, you know, it does, you guys know how important this all is to me, and I appreciate, Madam Mayor, allowing me to read the proclamation. It's been 17 years for me, you know, and most of that time being in Child Abuse, Sex Child Abuse Unit. But I just wanted to say that, you know, we really do, it's been said, we need to educate our communities. It's not just the mandated reporters that are responsible for reporting this kind. And I really got to commend YCCA and our CAPC for this toolkit because just last week, on Monday, I did my closing argument on a case where a child disclosed to another child, and that's how the case broke open, the child then told someone else. So, you know, these kinds of disclosures can happen at school with other kids. And so if we teach our kids to receive that information, you know, that's cute. But we also have to, to encourage aunts and uncles and neighbors and everyone else to know what to look for and also to create an environment where kids aren't embarrassed to disclose because it is just greatly stigmatized and embarrassing. And so with that, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for the toolkit. And, you know, we, we can help, they need our help in spreading the awareness onward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potemar Roscoe. Councilmember Ledesma.
You, Madam Mayor. Excuse me, and thank you to my colleagues. I don't think I have too much more to add to all your very eloquent and heartfelt sentiments toward this very important proclamation and acknowledgement and effort. And, and, you know, to the, to the folks who showed up to represent their organizations today to support our community. Thank you for not just being here today before you do year-round. And I think that's my one message to all of us. I know there's not thousands or millions watching tonight's telecast or, or stream of our, of our council meeting. We like to think that sometimes. But for those who are watching and those who are in, in the panel or in the waiting room watching, you know, the challenge is upon all of us to educate everybody. It's just not us five council members who do this work. It's, it's, it takes the village and it takes all of you. So certainly just mentioning that this is, this is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Talking about the services available, talking about this subject is, is really important to pass on. So I'm challenging the community to do the same. It's not easy. It's not a topic that we all kind of pull aside and think about. And it is, and frankly, it does require more than just a post or the tweet or the Instagram photo. It requires dialogue, requires education and understanding. I think that's, that's what I would ask our community to think about and take the time this month to do because that's the, that's the relevance of us today is our ability to, to, to really bring understanding to this issue and these types of issues. I think that's where we can be of importance and relevance as individuals. So I'd ask all of you to take the month to, to, to try to find time to talk about it because there is a child out there somewhere who just can't break through, and we might find it, you might help that person. So thank you all, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for bringing this to a resolution today.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma, and thank you to all of my colleagues. I know each and every one of you here on council is extremely passionate and committed to making sure that all our children are safe. We've experienced tragedy, as Councilmember Akala has pointed out, and it, it just breaks our heart and also stops us in our tracks to figure out where did we miss, you know, being able to address something like this. you know, being able to address something like this. Um, these are, you know, children who are, you know, in our midst and, and families, you know, who, um, you know, for some reason, we, we, uh, did not know the crisis they were experiencing. Um, when the family court system is also another area that, uh, we can emphasize a need to protect children. Um, that's an area that, that I've, um, been interested in seeing some more recognition for, um, families, uh, you know, for the, uh, victim of the domestic violence as they work through getting custody arrangements to ensuring that that custody arrangement is maintaining the security and protection of the entire family. And also mental health, um, as they, as a child experiences abuse, that they immediately access mental health services because of the trauma associated with that and manifest itself in ways, um, behaviorally, which, um, can, you know, appear aggression, um, or can appear like, you know, the child is just misbehaving and not listening. When the child is, uh, pretty much screaming for help, screaming for ways to, you know, figure out how to deal with the turmoil, how to deal with the internal chaos that they've experienced in the past that is triggered, um, quite easily, um, in a classroom setting, which is a setting where they are um, predominantly, you know, in sitting at. And they may not be going through additional abuse, but it's the, um, past trauma that can trigger that. And so, um, you know, uh, very appreciative that Dr. Hildreth is creating a center for children to access and it's, um, all children. It's something we looked at. And also, you know, Dr. Early would be proud of us that we asked for the data. So we, we, we inquired about how we can, you know, learn more about the children's needs and, uh, you know, the, the pandemic, I think hits, um, those uh, who are in most need of the, uh, support that the county or the city services can provide. And, uh, there are, you know, resources that are being provided, um, from the federal level, um, sometimes the state level over the years as an advocate myself, um, for Los Angeles County. I think it, it falls short. And so the county and the cities are really left with, you know, putting the pieces together. And I cannot emphasize enough how, how much pride I have um, in seeing that Yolo County, you know, amidst the financial hardship, has pulled together the CAPC program to deliver resources out into the community. And also, um, in the implementation of several programs, um, as we look at Yolo Crisis Nursery and also Welcome Baby and the investments we are making above and beyond what we are, you know, thinking is just what we have to do, uh, because we are a county administration and, and it falls on us to have to do this. But instead, I think the county, you know, takes the initiative and goes a step beyond that. Welcome Baby is going to give, you know, moms who are going through postpartum and, uh, you know, may have a hard time managing what their emotional, you know, um, feelings are as they have a new baby in their life and the stressors associated with that, which can contribute to either neglect or, you know, some type of, um, situation where the baby's not safe. And so, you know, I'm really grateful that, um, programs like that are being implemented here in Yolo County and giving us an opportunity to learn more about our newest members of our community and, um, new young moms and what we can do to provide support for them. So, you know, just want to say thank you to all of our community partners here today, uh, and, um, appreciate all you do and to all of my council members, um, thankful for your leadership and your, um, recognition of the Child Abuse Prevention Month. So with that, I will accept a motion to, um, uh, to approve the consent agenda.
Out, let's move the item.
I can move.
The whole consent calendar.
The whole consent cal, thank you. Uh, so, um, Mayor Potemorosco moved and council member Early seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Early. Hi. Council member Alcala.
Hi.
Council member Ledesma. Mayor Potemorosco.
Hi.
Mayor Guerrero.
Hi.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved. And next we'll move to our time-set agenda item under City Manager's Office's item seven of public hearing on initial draft maps related to the city's transition to district-based elections. And our deputy city manager, John Robinson, is here to, um, go over this.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. This is the fourth in the series of public hearings that the council has held to discuss the transition from at-large to district-based elections and to solicit community feedback. As with the previous meetings, most of this presentation will be done by redistricting partners, the city's consultant, but I do want to provide some introductory comments before I turn it over to Joe and Paul. Um, we'll continue to share, you know, any community submitted maps that come in and any feedback that comes in at upcoming meetings, but tonight's meeting really reflects the transition from the, from the phase where the focus was on generating more maps and more input to a phase where it's more about the council narrowing down the maps that it has and beginning to focus in on a, a, a smaller group of maps from which to select final map that it goes with. To date, uh, council staff and redistricting partners have conducted four community outreach workshops and Joe will walk you through the feedback that we received from those. The city's also in receipt of dozens of maps that were created by community members, which are included with your materials for this evening's meeting. To help narrow the field of viable maps this evening, we're asking the council to provide as much substantive feedback as possible. As we note in the report, this feedback could take many forms, including referencing an existing map that you like or do not like, mentioning principles that you think are important for a good map and describing specific map characteristics that you like or don't like. The array of options that you have in front of you can begin to feel overwhelming, but redistricting partners has guided many cities through this process. You can rest assured that you have expert guidance to help narrow down the maps and make a decision that complies with the law and serves the residents' best interests. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe Armenta from Redistricting Partners. And when his presentation is complete, he and Paul Mitchell will be, be available for questions along with staff. Thanks.
Yes. Uh, hello, everyone. Um, for, for all of you that don't know me, my name is Joe Armenta. I'm with Redistricting Partners. I'm also joined by Paul Mitchell, um, who is the owner of Redistricting Partners. We are a firm that help cities and municipalities and uh, different jurisdictions with the redistricting, uh, process and districting as well, which is what the city of West Sacramento is going through right now. I want to provide you with the presentation, um, uh, just where we're at in this process. Uh, this will be, I believe, our fourth public hearing on this matter. So we have, uh, we have gone into many of the things that we'll discuss tonight in more detail. Uh, if you would like more information on that, I encourage you to visit the city's website um, and review our past meeting materials, um, which go more in-depth into some of the things that we talk about. Um, and you all can see my presentation, correct? Excellent. Uh, so just in terms of the agenda, we're just going to do a quick review of the Fair Maps Act criteria and some of the rules that we are playing by when we are creating these maps and, um, and then we're going to talk about just the, uh, draft, uh, maps that we have created. Um, at Redistricting Partners, these are the ones that we presented to you at the last meeting, so no significant changes on it. Uh, we're just going to present it to you again, just very quickly. Um, we will review some of the public maps that have been submitted as well, and then we'll talk about next step. And then, um, we can help you all out with discussions and be here for questions as well. Um, just to provide a quick overview of, uh, the Fair Maps Act criteria, again, these are the rules that we have to abide by when we are creating these districts. One is that the districts need to be relatively equal size. There is a little bit of wiggle room though, so the biggest district, um, uh, the difference between the biggest district and the smallest, smallest district can't be more than ten percent, but we do have that ten percent deviation and a wiggle. And that's total population of people that live in the area according to the twenty-twenty U.S. Census. Um, it's not only the citizens in the area, it's not only the people above eighteen, it's all the people that live in that area as counted by the census and, um, that was conducted in April twenty-twenty. Um, the districts also must be contiguous as well. Every part of the district needs to be touching, uh, each other. Uh, the districts also should maintain communities of interest as well. Uh, we've talked a lot about communities of interest and we've held public hearings to gather feedback from the community to let us know what communities, uh, reside in, in West Sacramento and what uh, communities we should take into consideration when we are drawing these maps. Um, the city, uh, the, the, uh, district line should also follow, uh, city and census designated place boundaries. Obviously, this is the city of West Sacramento, so we're kind of at the smallest unit. Um, but we try, you know, to avoid splitting neighborhoods and, uh, things of that nature. Um, and then, uh, to keep the districts compact too, in both appearance and function, so to try to avoid creating sprawling districts, big squiggly lines that go all over the place. Um, additionally, with the California Fair Maps Act, it prohibits us from considering, uh, incumbent residences or the residences of potential candidates. And also, uh, it prohibit, prohibits us from drawing districts to benefit or disadvantage any political party. So we, um, those are things that we do not consider when we are drawing. Um, we have been taking a lot of, of, uh, community testimony at this point. We've held two virtual public hearings and then also, uh, in-person ones over the last uh, week and a half. We were, uh, I was actually in West Sacramento and all of this was to gather input from the public and to really, um, uh, uh, get their ideas of what the map should look like and what, uh, districts would best represent the community. Um, we believe this is the best process for, uh, going about districting and gets the community engaged. Also allows us to present in public, um, so, you know, we're not, uh, doing this in like a closed-room session, uh, but the public does have a chance to participate in this process. Um, so far at the community hearings, I'm just going to quickly review some of the things we heard. Uh, back in February, uh, a lot of folks talked about the need for representation in the northern part of the city. Um, you know, they talked about food deserts, lack of access to some services, uh, feeling underrepresented, underrepresented, uh, in their area. So, um, that was something that was discussed a lot at the first meeting. At the second meeting, uh, we had folks testify about Stonegate neighborhood and keeping that area together. They felt it was split in the, in the school district process and they would like to keep it whole, uh, in the city, um, in the city districting process. Uh, one member testified about, uh, history of discrimination in northern parts of the city. Another member testified about, um, asking, uh, us to consider low propensity voters when we were drawing these districts. And then also, uh, uh, folks talked about, uh, the population growth and, uh, maybe taking into account some under, undeveloped areas right now that may have future population in it. Um, we also received some online submissions about, uh, uh, keeping the Brideway communities together and then the Iron Works community as well. Um, we, as I mentioned though, we've also, uh, held meetings over the last couple of weeks. Uh, these were in-person community workshops. Most of them were centered around just giving the public information about the process and, um, and letting them know what, what was going on. Additionally, we provided them with, uh, kind of hands-on demonstration of the, uh, one of the tools we have available, the mapping tool, and then basically let them know how they could, uh, map out their communities or provide us with uh, potential draft district maps that they, that they think the city council should consider. So most of the meetings were on that. We did have a portion though that was, uh, uh, available for testimony from the public about, uh, and feedback for the draft maps that we have proposed. Um, you know, again, most people had questions about District R and the process itself, but we did get feedback that, um, in our draft map two, the second one, there's a district, uh, District C that's in the southern part of the district. A lot of people talked about, you know, maybe that district wasn't the most compact district, but they would like to see it uh, representation a little bit more closer to home in the south. And I'll kind of review that, what that map looks like when I, when I go over the draft map. Um, but really that was the only piece of feedback we got from that original meeting. Um, the next meeting, we, we had, um, members, uh, testify, um, asking us to keep, uh, to utilize data about household income and voter participation rate when we are, uh, considering this map. Um, we had members of the public testify to, to keep the state streets areas together and also emphasize workers who may commute across the river into downtown, um, and, uh, take those into consideration when we were drawing these maps. And then, uh, we had members concerned also about the compactness of that, uh, District C and draft map two, which again, I'll, I'll show you what that looked like. Um, and then, uh, I, I didn't put this bullet point here, but a lot of people did also talk about future growth and, and, uh, future development and maybe taking that into consideration. Um, but, uh, we are taking all this input and we, we, uh, considered it when we were, uh, creating our draft maps. Again, that was about two, three weeks ago at this point, so a lot more information has come in since then. Um, but we're also collecting information via some tools that we have available. Um, one is a, a website is called District, uh, DistrictR.org. Um, the, here, people can actually map out the community and draw potential districts. Um, and, and all the maps that they create are available and on display on that website. Um, but we, every day we go through and we take, uh, the maps that are submitted on the website, we run it through our programs, and then we actually create what are called atlases, which is a packet of materials that give an overlay of the map and then go district by district and provides you with demographic information. Uh, we were able to convert the, the maps submitted to us on District R into these atlases. And then we, uh, publish them on the city's website, um, uh, where people can go and view them. And if you just go to the cityofwestsacramento.org, uh, one of the first links that pops up is the, the, the link to uh, the city's districting website where all this information is being stored and is kind of the hub for a lot of the uh, districting, uh, uh, things that we've been doing over the last two months. Um, we can, of course, run, uh, further analyses on this, uh, on the public maps that, that are submitted at the request of the city council. Um, I think we're well over thirty at this point. Um, I'll present a few of the, the ones I haven't presented yet to the council. I'll present them tonight just really quickly. Um, but again, they're all available on the city's website. Uh, just to provide a quick overview, again, these are the maps we created based on the public, uh, input that we received at the time. Uh, we had in, uh, at the last meeting, the council didn't provide us with any additional direction on, on these maps, so uh, we haven't made any changes to them at this point. Um, but I'm just going to quickly review them of what, what the draft maps are. Um, just keep in mind too, when we, uh, display this information, all these materials have been provided with you. They're available on the city's website, uh, uh, including it, it goes district by district and kind of zooms in on the area um, and then provides you with demographic information. Um, but this is our draft plan one. Um, so this draft plan one creates a northern district that unites, uh, Brightwood-Broderick. Um, it has kind of a central district, um, along the eastern side of the city uh, that mostly stays above the channel with just a little crossover into this community right here. Um, it has a district on both sides of the port and both sides of the channel right there that goes from the southern part to the northern part. And then, uh, it has this District C at the bottom and that kind of, uh, uh, hooks from, um, the Brideway Lakes area all the way up to the Stonegate. And then just to take a look at, uh, the statistics, and remember the main thing that we're looking at in all the maps that we will be presenting tonight is that, is if the districts are relatively equal size, if they're within that ten percent deviation. Um, remember that's a difference between the biggest district and the smallest district. It can't be more than ten percent. So we're shooting for below ten percent. Uh, this one is at four point five. Uh, this is our draft plan two that we provided. This is the one that, uh, folks were commenting, commenting on, um, at our public hearings. Um, mostly in regard to this District C right here, uh, that goes from the Bridge Lakes area all the way up to kind of the State Streets neighborhood. Um, you know, many folks felt like it wasn't, uh, compact enough for their liking. Um, but, uh, yeah, this one connects, uh, it does keep, uh, keep the, um, Linden Loop community together with the Brideway Isles, uh, neighborhood and some of those southern communities and it doesn't cross the river there. Uh, but that does create the kind of sprawling District C. Um, uh, you have District B, which is mostly kind of the north central area of town um, with a little part going out to the river. And then you have a northern District A, which um, mostly follows the railroad tracks and it crosses over a little bit, um, kind of near, I, I believe that's the Capitol Bridge right there. Um, so that's the dividing line between District A and B. When we look at the population statistics, we're at, uh, six point eight percent deviation, so we're well within the range. And then we have draft map C. Uh, draft map C, uh, has a district that in the south unites the Brideway Isles with the Brideway Lakes communities together and that's right here. It does cross Jefferson Boulevard and then include some of the kind of new housing um, up in the eastern part of the southern portion of the city. Um, it keeps Linden Circle and Stonegate together in a district and then it crosses and includes the port in this district along with a few communities around the port. Um, and the District B, it mostly in the central, um, portion of the northern part of the city. Um, it does include the Rivers community with, uh, uh, kind of the State Streets area. And basically it just follows the rivers there, uh, to create kind of a riverfront district in the north. And then it does have a Bright and Broderick district along with a few of the communities around this area. Um, when we look at the population statistics, uh, we're at seven point six percent deviation, so still under. Um, and so we're good to go. So that's a review of the draft maps. Again, they are all available online along with the publicly submitted maps. Uh, kind of what's next in this process. And again, I'll review the public maps after, when I'm done with this presentation. Uh, but we'll receive, uh, we'll turn this over to the city council, which will identify maybe preferred plans, which plans they uh, uh, like the most and, and maybe want to move forward with it or advise us to make changes with it. Uh, they can, again, suggest possible changes to either the existing draft plan or any other public maps that have been submitted. Uh, they can just provide us direction on, um, how we should move forward. Uh, they can just provide us direction on um how we should move forward. Uh, if we were to move forward with a new map, um, you know, uh, they can tell us to consider some things when we're, when we're drawing this. And then um, and then, yeah, again, we can consider a new map at our next public hearing, although we are uh slowly, slowly coming, approaching the end of this process. Remember, the map has to be um online seven days before you take a final vote on it. Um, so by early May, we should be kind of uh reaching a final plan in order to get it uh passed by, by the deadline. Um, uh, we were asked to identify, though, some common themes that we're seeing and some common, uh, some decisions that the council might take into consideration. Uh, this isn't a, a list of everything. These are just things that we noticed as we were going through, through each of the draft maps. And some, some things that could, uh, the council could consider when we're uh, when they're advising us on, on what to do here. Um, I want to make clear that we are not advocating or um or really discrediting any of these issues as well. Uh, these are just some themes that we're seeing in some of the public map. And some of the decisions that the council could consider when moving forward. Um, and really, they're listed out from south to north. So one is the Bridgeway Lakes and Bridgeway Isles area. Uh, does the council believe they should be in the same district or in separate districts? Uh, that could be something they could direct us on. Um, there's the port in, in uh kind of the middle of the city that could go in a northern district or it could go in a southern district. Um, uh, or it could span across both districts, as we've seen in our draft map A. Um, there's a question of using Jefferson Boulevard as a dividing line between districts in the south. Um, so uh, do we use Jefferson as a hard border or do, or, or do we want to kind of cross Jefferson uh Boulevard? Um, there's the idea of the, the state streets, kind of, where do they go? Is, is it part of the north? Should they be part of the northern community, or should is it okay to expand into southern areas? Um, there's a question, too, of the Rivers uh development as well. Uh, should it be included with its neighbors in Brighton-Broderick, or should it kind of go down the riverfront and uh and join neighborhoods in the central part of the city? Um, there's a question of Brighton-Broderick. Should they be in the same district or in separate districts? Um, uh, and then in the north, too, uh, should we use the railroad tracks as a dividing line, or is there some sort of street uh that would be preferred in dividing districts? And then also, there is the question of um potentially uh intentionally underpopulating districts to account for future growth. Remember, we have to stay within that ten percent deviation, but uh uh you might, you know, and you could instruct us to go to negative nine percent, um, and leave the other districts at one percent, um, in order to leave room for, for potential growth in the area. Um, uh, that is something that we can consider. Um, just a quick lay of the land of where we're going to here. Uh, we have had meetings since February twenty uh twenty-second. Um, this is April sixth. This is our, our um fourth city council hearing. We have another uh city council hearing scheduled on April twentieth. And then one in early May. At the time of, we were drafting this, I don't know if we had a date yet, but I believe we're, we're planning on one in early May um for the council meeting, and then we're hoping to have a final vote on this on May eighteenth. So that's our presentation. I'm going to go through the draft maps, though, or I'm sorry, the publicly submitted maps really quick. Um, and then uh I will turn it over to you all, the city council, to ask questions, and we're happy to go back or, or do uplift maps that have been submitted. So, give me one second. And can I just get a nod if you can see the public map? Great. Um, so these are all the public maps that have been submitted since our last uh public hearing. I'm just going to kind of quickly go through them. Um, this one uh creates kind of two Brighton-Broderick's district. Everything looks contiguous on this one. There's a few, what we call unassigned census blocks. These are just areas that people may have missed when they were drawing. We could fix that um later if, if uh the council would like to, but this is this would be map one, two, zero, seven, six, six on the, you'll see right here. That's kind of the ID for a lot of these maps. So one, two, zero, seven, six, six. This is what it looks like. And this is the population uh page. I'm just going to show you kind of, again, this third line at the top, that's the deviation. And then we're taking the biggest district and we're comparing it to the smallest district, and we're looking at the size difference between those districts. This one appears to be at three percent deviation, so we're under the ten percent. The next map I have is one, two, one, one, seven, two. Uh, this is what it looks like. It looks pretty similar to the last map. You have the rivers kind of going down that way. Um, looks a lot like our, our draft one, but with this area a little different. And if we look at the population deviation, the smallest district is at six point seven percent. Uh, this is at six point six percent, so we're at thirteen point four percent deviation. Uh, so this one would be, would need some work if, if we were going to move forward with it. Our next map is uh one, two, one, five, seven, zero. That kind of creates a Brighton-Broderick split, and it goes from Broderick to the eastern part, or sorry, the western part of the city. Everything appears to be contiguous in it. And uh, we're looking at a minus two point seven, and the biggest district is two point five, so about a uh five point two percent deviation, so under ten percent. Next district is one, I'm sorry, next plan is one, two, one, six, one, eight. This is what it looks like. Northern district, kind of a central district. Um, the Bridgeway communities are united. This looks like our plan three, I believe. Just some differences up here. And the population deviation is the biggest district, five point two percent. The smallest district is uh two points, then minus two point seven. So we're at uh seven point nine percent, so we're in ten percent range. This is our next map. Again, you see a Brighton-Broderick switch and then kind of the same southern divide that you saw in the last one. And this is map one, two, one, six, two, four. And this map has a district that's seven percent over. And then the smallest district, though, is minus two point seven, so it's at nine point seven percent deviation. Uh, so this would be under ten percent. Our next map is one, two, seven, one, nine, one. And again, uh, this one, it has part of Broderick with right. Um, Broderick would be split in this map. Has the rivers going down, the riverfront area, and then the similar southern divide. And the population deviation is the smallest district is minus two point seven. The biggest district is one point two, so three point nine percent. Our next district looks very similar to the last one, maybe some changes to it, but is one, two, seven, one, nine, nine. And then uh this one will be overpopulated, eight point eight and minus six point three, so fifteen-ish pers- percent deviation, so it needs some work. Next map is one, two, one, nine, three, one. Northern district has this kind of central southern district, and again, somewhat similar. It looks like they didn't use Jefferson as the dividing line. I don't know what street that is. Um. And this is map one, two, one, nine, three, one, if, if I didn't say that yet. And this map is a little bit over at minus six point six and uh positive six point eight, so about a thirteen point four percent deviation. So it is above the ten percent. Uh, this is a community map. This is, was submitted by somebody who kind of tried to map out where uh they believe downtown workers live. Uh, so this is just uh their thoughts on, on uh people who commute into downtown Sacramento. So I'll just kind of leave it there for you all to take into consideration. Next map we have is one, two, two, three, three, five. Um. Similar southern divides going into some communities up here. Um. You know, I think this might be a little underpopulated, but we will see. Actually, no, we're, we're kind of spot on, so um almost exactly the same, so we're at less than point three percent deviation. So, that one, I stand corrected. Uh, we have this map, which kind of creates a whole riverfront district, and then I think they were seeing what that would do to kind of these communities around here. Uh, this one probably wouldn't be contiguous, though, in this district. There's really nothing connecting this part to the upper part. Um, in terms of infrastructure. Uh, but the population deviation is well within range at point six percent. And we have three more. Next map is one, two, three, one, zero, seven. Uh, this one does create a Brighton-Broderick kind of split. Um, has a southern district down, but mostly uses Jefferson as the divide. Um, and then crosses over the river right here. And the population deviation, the biggest district is five point three, smallest district is minus three under, so eight point three percent. This one was submitted on what we call our placemats. This is a paper map that people can actually draw. We handed these out at a lot of our meetings. Uh, so somebody kind of drew this on the placemat, took a picture of it, and I recreated it in our program. Uh, this is what the map looks like. And this is, so we call this placemat zero, zero, one. And the population deviation is under two percent in this one, so it's minus zero, nine, and above zero, nine, so uh one point eight. Then we have our final map that was submitted. This is map one, two, three, three, four, four. Um, similar southern split, um, kind of has the rivers connected with um uh communities along the riverfront and then Brighton-Broderick together in a northern district. And this is uh, the biggest district is two point seven percent, and the smallest one is minus two point seven. Uh, so five point four percent deviation, um, so we're within ten percent. Okay, so that's all I have in terms of the presentation. And again, I'm happy to go back to stuff, and we have uh Paul here, too, who can answer questions as well, but at this point, we will turn it back to the council.
All right. Thank you so much, um, Joe. Uh, John, did you have any other, you know, kind of guidance on um what you would like from us, you know, as far as a timeline? Um, so that we can help you provide the feedback that you need for your next steps.
Yeah, I, I think, I think Joe, Joe went over it, and I mentioned it as well. I think, you know, I, I do want to underscore the, the eighteenth is the last day when everything has to be done, so we're really trying to not have the council, you know, make, still making decisions between maps at that point. We're really targeting the first meeting in May for you all to um pick a final map. If you could do that on April twentieth, that would be great. There's nothing to say you couldn't do it earlier, but we are looking at the first meeting in May as your target for having a final, a final map, but then we'd have a first and second reading, and the second reading would end on May.
The second reading would be on the eighteenth of what? I'm sorry, I just.
May.
Okay. And um, the first week of, well, the first meeting in May is a special meeting that we have um rescheduled because we're all going to be at cap to cap, so. Um, so what you want, Ben, just to make sure, just to recap, is some, some general, you know, this, the, you know, this is, this is kind of like the field that helps us kind of direct you to prepare some maps that you will come back, you know, um in early May. Um, and then after that, we have a seven-day window that um for that final map that needs to be posted before the decision is made in um our second meeting in May, correct?
Yeah, and you, we, you, you'll have a meeting on April twentieth where you can narrow it down even further, or you could even decide that night if you're, if you're ready.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, you know, if, so we're not, we're not saying you can't do it earlier, but, but definitely by the, by the May tenth meeting, if you pick your final map, then then we know we're good for the, be done by the eighteen.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Council member, or Mayor Berter Marosco, you had your hand up for a second.
I did. I wasn't sure what the order was going to be. Is it just taking questions first, then getting public comment, then we're going to give our own comment?
Oh, we can, we can provide, you know, ask questions by comment now, and then we'll open it up for public comment, and then back, wrap it up with additional council feedback.
That's fine. I, I'll just, I'll go ahead and reserve until after I hear public comment.
Okay, everybody waiting to, want to wait to public comment? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment at this time. Madam, are there any requests?
If anyone would like to provide comment on this item at this time, please raise your hand. I'm already. Our first speaker is Scott Rafferty. Mr. Rafferty?
Hello, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So uh, I, I want to uh commend uh the demographer on, on the efforts to to organize uh some of the public maps. Uh, but they're, they're still in three different places. Uh, there's a, an atlas on one point uh in the uh uh, on the webpage, there's a DistrictR site, and there's some attached to the uh staff report this evening. Uh, and they're all being given kind of equal dignity, and that's a concern for me because I think that some of them may be written by the same person. Uh, and I, you know, anonymous comments are absolutely protected. But I, I think uh we need to have a better understanding of what people are trying to accomplish. And uh, when somebody puts their name on something and says, here's what I'm trying to do, I think that really is entitled to extra consideration. Uh, and uh, I, I, it's, they've made some efforts to, to organize this uh frankly, flood of, of, of public maps and uh and to tell us, uh, but I'm not sure people have been given a full opportunity to explain what they're trying to achieve, and that would, would uh make things easier. So uh, two weeks ago, the census delivered the first uh demographic data using the new census geography. And we presented about a dozen maps, uh, just showing areas of what, what we see as economic hardship. Uh, based on home values, based on uh people that don't have uh cars or computers, uh, don't households that don't speak English. Uh, and uh, uh, that kind of confirms some things we already knew that many of these factors are um specific to the north. Uh, it makes me a little bit suspicious of, of uh putting areas between Capitol Avenue and the freeway into a southern district. Uh, but it also revealed something interesting that is atypical, and that is that uh the uh, the south has disproportionate numbers of young people uh under eighteen. Usually that goes hand in hand with non-citizens. That makes me feel a lot better about not seeing the disparities that you want to see uh in, in total CBAP, because you want to have a district where people have been underrepresented and, and to protect that from uh higher participation districts and not have everything be homogenized. So that uh, that was kind of an important factor, and I hope those maps help people. They have to be combined with neighborhood definitions and uh and, and clearer boundaries uh to draw districts. I did hear one thing tonight that I disagree with, and that is consideration of future growth. Uh, the legislature outlawed that. Uh, these maps need to be based on the twenty-twenty census.
Three minutes?
Okay, well, if that's the end of my time, that's the end of my time, but um we have uh, you know, tried to contribute to the process, so thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Maria Gahalva.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I uh completely uh disagree that we're supposed to be limited to three minutes. Uh, Scott Rafferty, the attorney in this matter, was speaking and got caught up, caught off. At three minutes, I think that's inappropriate. Uh, this is supposed to be a public forum, not only a three-minute public comment. Uh, and so if you would have the courtesy of putting him back on. He is not only my representative, this is supposed to be a public workshop, a public hearing where we have a dialogue regarding this. This is not supposed to be a one-way conversation where we're only limited to three minutes. So if you would give the, him the courtesy of speaking, uh, and he is the legal representative in this matter. I already told John this, that is, this is, this is supposed to be a public uh forum. This is not supposed to be uh where we only provide three minutes of public comment. That's not proper. Anti-legal. It's supposed to be a workshop.
Madam clerk, are there any other requests to speak? I think Maria is done, I'm not sure.
We have no additional hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Um, I um, bring it back to council, um, I do want to have one quick question to um, to our um, attorney, Mr. Mitchell, um, on the question related to public comment.
That's totally within your call, mayor. Three minutes is standard for the council. I understand the point being made. Mr. Rafferty is the attorney representing the plaintiff in the litigation that resulted in a settlement. Um, it's your call, but as I say, practice for the city has been three minutes for all speakers on all items. But it is your call whether you want to allow a deviation from that.
Okay, thank you. I, I do, I, okay, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I do want to um, allow for it, that I think it is within my call and I do think that we provided on the standard three minutes um, per speaker, you know, uh, this is a council meeting, it's not a workshop. It is uh, you know, separate from workshops that we have held and there's a timeline. Um, I, I will, I don't see a whole lot of other people that are requesting to speak at this time. So if um, we can open it up for public comment from Mr. Rafferty to, to use some additional of open it up for two more minutes for Mr. Rafferty, if you can summarize your key points and um, and uh, allow for the clerk to um, give you two more minutes.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I mean, we're trying to be a resource here and uh, I think we've, we've, we've said before, uh, this is about the two things basically. Uh, giving uh, the affected minority group a uh, a, a, a more equal opportunity to have dedicated voice on the council by increasing its C VAP share in at least one district. You know, there's going to be kind of a second strong Latino district. Uh, but it's also about increasing voter participation in that community. And as uh, Congressman Edwards said 50 years ago, uh, you're never going to get Latinos in California to vote until candidates from their own neighborhoods knock on their door and explain why it's so important. That's what went on for generations of previous inter, yeah, previous uh, immigrants in our country from back really to colonial time. That's American democracy. So that's why we've provided this demographic information. I think it helps visualize why it's important to separate North from South and the gradations within the North. I mean, Rivers is a much more affluent community, much than, than Broderick and Bright. And I just uh, you know, want to be available to people, whether they agree with us or not, to provide that information. I think having more turnout information to score the maps might be useful. It's just asking too much to try to score them on these other demographics and I'm not suggesting that. It's just a visual to, to, to put into the puzzle. As to future population growth, again, uh, you know, the, the data is brand new. Not a lot of past growth isn't included in the census. Future growth is pretty speculative, you know, we have real estate crashes. It's also a little bit under your control. Uh, in terms, so, so the Supreme Court's always been hesitant about uh, allowing it cautious. The 10% is just for neighborhoods, keep them intact and could use it for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, um, Madam clerk for keeping track and uh, Mr. Rafferty for additional comments. And we'll wrap up the public comment, bring it back to council. Who would like to go first?
Mayor, I just have a point of information, real, real quick.
Go ahead, council member Alcala.
Okay, um, I know on the school board sometimes when someone spoke three minutes, I'm, I'm just wondering how it's done here. Um, and let's say their time ran out, sometimes we had some parents that wanted to speak. Um, and then another parent would say, well, I want to speak, but I'm going to go ahead and allow my time to be used by the speaker. Do we ever do that on city council? I don't.
Not that I'm aware of, but uh, yeah, but I, I understand your point. Yeah, normally people, I mean, sometimes they don't wrap it up within three minutes, but um, they're not allowed to speak after that time.
Okay, thank you. Um, can I go first?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I've looked at the maps and I actually like quite a few of the maps. I want to make a point, I live in the rivers, it's considered a very affluent area. And one of the things I did not like was that when they run the rivers separately along the rivers, you're looking at an affluent district. That's basically what you're looking at. That's where you have, you know, um, housing apartments and stuff. I don't like that at all. I think the river should be included. I'm just going to say this, um, you know, to the demographer with the rest of the North. You know, it's really important, the shared history that we have with many, I realize the rivers is, is a new area. But um, we have a community over here and for me, I think it's really important to keep that community intact. And once again, I just have a real problem seeing the rivers pulled off, you know, along with the more affluent areas. It just doesn't seem right, especially in terms of economics. We're talking about equity issues, we should not create that type of district. So that's what I wanted to say. By the way, I'm still meeting with other individuals because I really want to get community feedback. I realize not everyone goes to these meetings, Mr. Roberts seen me at about two of them, I think. So, you know, I, I like to hear what people have to say. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Early?
Yeah, um, so this has been very helpful. I have, I'm also been engaging with community, I'm obviously talking a lot to parents and also just my neighbors and making them aware that this is happening and asking, you know, tell me what you think. Um, we want your opinion, especially because obviously, um, to Councilmember Alcala's um, point, not everyone can, can actually attend the meetings for various reasons. Um, so, so one of the things that, that I think is really important that I saw in a couple of the maps was using Jefferson as a, a cut, possible cut point where, where possible. Um, I think in one of the maps we saw it wasn't exactly, but they were basically, um, whoever designed that map was using, using Jefferson, at least in the South. I think it's hard to pull that all the way up um, to the North and still make all of those numbers work. And so I've heard that that's important. Um, I've also heard uh, keeping Bridgeway communities together, so Bridgeway Lakes and Bridgeway Islands um, together as far as just where is the community that you walk, right? When you think about when you go out and you're, you're congregating or where are you going, the parks that you're using? Um, I've, I've heard um, feedback regarding that, so I think that's really important. Um, keeping Stonegate together, I think we did see a couple of maps, even when you are using Jefferson as a, as a cut point that you can still keep Stonegate together and I think that is important. I think we've heard that from a lot of community members. And then, you know, I said this last time and I'll continue to say this, I think it's important um, that in our North that we are looking at Bright and Broderick and making sure that we, we keep those communities that also think of themselves as, as somewhat kind of separate, right? As communities and neighborhoods separate as well. Um, I agree with Councilmember Alcala that you can include the rivers and Broderick and that makes sense. And when I walk again, the, the Broderick area as I'm just, I'm congregating with, you know, with kids in, in the neighborhood and going to the parks and whatnot, we often will, you know, not only go to the rivers, but, but, but come within the Elkhorn, um, Elkhorn Park and we use that. And so in my mind, it's also a community that, that is together and so, so I would agree um, with that too. I don't know, John, was that specific enough? I know you said like, hey, I need you to get like, real specific.
No, that, that, that's great, that's, that's perfect, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Council member Ledesma.
Um, thank you and uh, uh, thanks to um, uh, Joe and Paul and your team for um, where I thought was, I think has been really good outreach and the tools you have are, have been amazing um, so far, um, just being able to um, draw a map and, and thank you for uh, the placemat. I, I only think I was aware of that till tonight that people could draw it on a plate and you can re, redo it. So thank you for the good outreach. I, I think one of the things that I'm, you know, coming to the table, I, I expressed some of this the last meeting about kind of, I'll get to it in a second, and how I'm thinking about the maps, but the feedback that I've received to date is, is kind of a little bit mixed, to be honest. People are just think, now starting to think about it and frankly, more than a few people are, are just realizing this is going on. Um, yeah, I know we've done a really good job on social media, City, thank you for getting it out there. But I think people on their collective busyness of the days are, are, are just starting to to um, understand sort of what, what's, what's happening here. And I think uh, we need to continue talking to our neighbors and talking to friends, um, getting feedback and, and making them aware because it's, it's an important decision. Um, so again, I think we, we will continue it on. Um, but it, it, it does validate some of the feedback kind of mine the least I've thought about approaching it, which is I haven't been too technical. I, I played with the re, the Districtor uh, tool uh, a little bit, just to kind of get a sense of what it does and how it counts and how you came up with a map you did and it's, it's a really cool tool, tool. Um, but, but kind of the way I, I've tried to approach this, I said last time is, it, it has to be really understandable by, uh, I think by the community at large. When they, some people are going to wake up and turn around and they're going to realize they're in a district and they're going to want to understand sort of what it looks like after, after it's been decided and frankly, we probably get to September, October, when it's time to elect a district representative, they'll realize that, oh, I'm in a district now and they'll look at the map and they'll, they'll say, you know, how does this, does this make sense? Oh yeah, it does. And so geographic landmarks, I think were one of the first things we talked about in the last meeting. And how do we, how do we accomplish that? And that's why I said I, I kind of approached it very sort of uh, Fisher Price, simple. Um, in my mind is that you sort of, the dividing line, the North-South access tends to be Jefferson. I think we all recognize that is the sort of the axis we fall upon. Um, and then whether it's the deep water channel or the, the freeway or, or uh, West Capitol or, or SACAV or sort of the East-West places you can, you can divide. And even when you get to the state streets, Park Boulevard is a dividing line, I think I saw that. And so I, I think it really is important that we, we, that people understand geographically, even though their neighbor across the street, you know, the communities of interest comes to mind, right? That their neighbor across the street is in their district, they could get why. So for me, it's about why would my neighbor across the street from uh, I'm, I'm, I think everybody knows where I sort of live. Um, so I'm on Rubicon, you walk a block down and you're at Linden and it would be uh, hard for people to understand people just that right there that have homes that are very similar to mine, they're in a different district. And so when somebody brought up the Stonegate together, I think I'm in that Stonegate area. That's, that's sort of the thinking that I have. And similarly, I think that's why the Bridgeway Lakes, Bridgeway Island people are sort of conveying that they stay together. Um, similarly around how I think about Bright and the neighborhoods uh, at Meadowdale or within Broderick or Washington neighborhoods, how they think about themselves geographically and uh, it's got to make sense to them too. So again, I've been trying to think about it as uh, quadrants, um, you know, the Northeast, Southeast, uh, Northwest, Southwest sort of quadrants. Could you, could you get away, could you find us a, a map that kind of entails that so people can get, yeah, I'm kind of there. And I saw a couple of maps that kind of went into that and I'm going to point, one came up, I think just um, in, in early on, because I, I wrote it down at the last meeting, which is one, one, eight, nine, zero, five. Kind of got that, um, and then the other one that came up was one, two, three, one, oh, seven, which I saw tonight. Um, again, those are kind of, um, and if I had to pick between what you've already presented, um, it would probably be a mashup of um, I'm sorry, flipping through that map of um, maybe map, draft plan two and draft plan three, where I see the draft plan, you know, kind of, it's, it's using Jefferson as a sort of uh, dividing line. I'm not sure, Joe, if you can pull up uh, one, if you could find one, one, eight, nine, oh, five.
Yeah, one second.
Yeah, but, but, but as you, as you're pulling that up, um, you know, it was just something that I, that sort of, just, you know, whoever did it um, um, kind of graphically pictured what I was having on my head. A couple of things that you were pointing out earlier to think about, I appreciate that, that, that things about Stonegate. Um, the things about um, how you can in, 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 ensure representation um, across the board, I kind of think about, you know, every part of the city should have one, maybe in two parts, refer to representatives, including that large mayor. Um, uh, kind of at, you know, the ability to represent one side of the city or, or the other one east, whether east defined by east or west, the riverfront versus, you know, the industrial side of the city versus uh, the North uh, or the South. And there's, there's always two people sort of, plus the mayor that sort of equate out that representation that those interests can be cared for. Um, the, the, the idea of planning, thinking about growth, I, I don't think we planned for growth. I, I, I heard uh, the attorney here about that earlier. Um, but I do recognize even in Southport and we, we have to understand that Southport, especially the Bridge District and Washington Neighborhoods, the riverfront, uh, those would be probably uh, areas that will grow um, in the next 10 years. And, and I'm not saying we accommodate that growth, but I think it's, it's in my mind, thinking about uh, neighborhoods that maybe uh, maybe that are being planned uh, south of me. Um, and in the Bridge District, but does it influence my thinking? No, it's just something, well, I guess it does, just, just sort of ways in terms of population and how that might, might, might affect the, the, the district over time. But it is based on, we were using today's numbers for sure. Um, so I'm not sure if you have that mapped up, I can kind of.
I do, I can share my screen right now.
Yeah, be great. And I'll say what I like about it and again, I'll feedback again, you know, for, for me at least, the, the, the three, four, which I'll start with. Um, sort of, uh, we, I know, and I think people know, you know, there's never going to be enough rooftops, uh, people on either side of Jefferson to, to make up for it, which is why the approaches are either wraparound um, into the east side of Jefferson uh, and into Bridgeway Island or Bridgeway Lakes and leave the London Loop area and North and Arlington Oaks together. Um, but this for me kind of visually right off the bat, the impression I had about this was just the you know, it's, it's kind of like I said, Fisher Price, simple for somebody to understand that they're in this district, they're in district. Um, it, it does create representation for me, the, the way I think about it is those in the North will basically have two representatives now in the North. Um, those in the South would have two, Riverfront would have two and two and four and kind of the industrial areas and Bridgeway Island along the Riverfront, the river, I'm sorry, the bypass front on that side, that would have one and three. So either way, there's always people that have interests um, that might uh, help better balance the council and future generations, future councils. So I did like this, there would probably be some, some, some things we could tinker with, which is around um, uh, the boundaries of the Gold One area, um, you know, make it more, if you make it more clean down, as it's coming down Kegel, I think the issue of the rivers, could it be in there? Could, should, you know, this one accomplishes for me, you know, the rivers neighborhood, the riverfront neighborhood, this is where a majority of the growth will be um, in the next 10 years. Um, and I'm not saying that we're accommodating the growth. I'm saying having a continuous representative that's in, in for the neighborhoods there. Uh, both uh, those that are uh, that are there today and those that will counting, uh, their issues will be very, very um, um, unique among the city. Um, so again, I like, I like that configuration, the fact that it brings uh, sort of the, the, the North Riverfront uh, Broderick together. Um, you think about the fact that we have the High Street Bridge replacement project starting hopefully here soon, in the next couple of years. That'll be hugely impactful to that neighborhood, to those neighborhoods, you know, the growth happening. So again, that district for me is one that um, deserves one representative and then you have Bright um, uh, and Bright, uh, Lord, although that Meadowdale, other, other areas down the state, reaching down the state streets. Again, I might tinker a bit around the edges to see if we can make the lines a little more clean. For instance, I'm not sure if, uh, I think if you zero it in on that, you would get hit uh, the Michigan Avenue area of that, you know, does that, can you make the math work where that's part of the Bright area? Um, above, around West Capitol Avenue, again, that's a sort of tinkering, what I think about. Um, but again, that's the sort of, I feel like the kind of the simple sort of quadrants this creates for the average voter who understands I'm in the Northeast part of Wesack and I'm going to vote in uh, District Two, or I'm in the uh, Northwest part of Wesack and I'm going to be in District One. And it, it just, just feels sort of, as we go into our first iteration of a district, feels very natural to me. And that's sort of what I am learning to, and, and so as far as District Three and Four, you know, Southport, um, obviously District Four, um, I, I think about, I think um, in this map, um, I don't know, do we know what the numbers are here by district? Joe? um, in this map, um, I don't know, do we know what the numbers are here by district, Joe?
In terms of population deviation.
Yeah, this is what's the deviation on this one?
Uh, so just in total, it's six point eight percent. And then I can go, if you had questions, district by district.
Yeah, I think it's down on the uh, District Three. I'm I'm guessing that going, because it might have been to, or District Four, I'm sorry. Because it goes up into the ideal into the state streets. And that's the part where I would maybe look at this map maybe differently. If, you know, this, can you make it work another way without it going up to the state streets? But I don't know if it's.
It's a little bit underpopulated as it is. So is this district as well, so you can't really take much from this one. So if you start removing people, it would likely go, um, it would be too underpopulated.
Yeah, well, I think it's just, again, I just want to get my thoughts out for everybody. I think, um, for me, the the District Four could make sense that way. Because I mean, communities of interest, you know, we in this part of town, we have some of the older neighborhoods in Southport and the London Loop. It's, um, it's London Acres to the west east of me, excuse me, and then Arlington Oaks and then the State Street. So there are, you know, there are newer houses there. I'm in one of them. Uh, but it's, you know, again, without looking at the numbers, you'd see sort of a good mix of old and new in these neighborhoods. And I think that's kind of where they could fit on that continuity. And again, I just kind of like how this lays out from a very simplistic geographic layout for the city. So I'll stop my comments there, but appreciate your thoughts. And John, I hope we gave you enough to think about there.
Councilmember, Mayor Potemorosco.
Thank you. Thank you. Couldn't we bring up the one, two, three, three, four, four, please?
Three, three, four, four, yes, just one second.
Like the last one, I think you showed us tonight. Okay, great. Well, I mean, clearly there are a million ways to skin a cat. That's wrong analogy, clearly, but to carve up our city. And, you know, it's I I had a great time utilizing the tool online. I actually utilize the maps, too. They're in our house right now because I take my little boys to the library and I saw them there and they were very attractive and fun for all of us. So thank you for offering multiple avenues by which to contribute. Now, I've lived in Bridgeway Island and Bridgeway Lakes and the State Streets where I now am in Old West Sacramento. And I I appreciate, like, even my councilman, my fellow colleague, uh, who just spoke, you know, the simplistic view of it and and just trying to, um, you know, step back and and see how it is that people could identify with different areas. With that, though, I I just, I got to say that, you know, there are multiple communities of interest in our city, too many. That's why it's so difficult for us to to group them into just four quadrants or districts that, because, I mean, so many resemble one another and you don't want to split them, but you can't avoid it because we have, you know, be within that 10% deviation. Um, so I know it's complicated, but, um, you know, I I did see a ton of different maps, all of which could work. So it's not saying that, you know, one is better than the other. But in looking at, uh, them and playing with it myself, I ought to say that I I did start with map three as a baseline. I my attention was drawn to map three at the last, not the last day, but the most recent one where we presented the maps. And it was, you know, put forth as one of the three by our districting partners. And it was, uh, in public comment supported by the Wesack Chamber. Uh, it also incorporated a lot of the interests that were put forth in the public comment that we've heard. And a lot of folks who had said they wanted to keep the, you know, their particular communities intact. And I I'm sure that if everybody in West Sacramento said the same thing, then, um, you know, we would have a done, a bunch of different maps to speak for. But, um, I would say that there have been several different proposals in the two meetings where we've seen the maps that utilize a similar approach to map three. And we saw seven to eight of them tonight with similar, uh, uh, you know, a view vantage point. And the specific elements that I think that are articulated are that the rivers are kept with the riverfront um, without splitting the rivers. That is important, too. You want to make sure that that is a community of interest that is not split apart. And so some of the maps, including one that we just heard, uh, the one, one, eight, nine, oh, five, no gorse. It's not a perfect map and it could be tweaked, but the rivers was split. There were aspects of the rivers that were put in a different district, uh, as well as it's split Broderick. And that's also one of the things we don't want to do. We wanted to keep, I heard that we want to keep Brighton Broderick together. But, you know, keeping the rivers with the riverfront and and picking up more of the Washington District, uh, this map does that. Uh, so this is a spin off of three, uh, yeah, map three. What we're seeing here is that there's relatively even numbers in each of the districts. There are three districts here that are touching West Capital Avenue. And to me, that's really important because West Capital Avenue is where we have been seeing so much of the activity recently, whether it be policy issues that we need to address or in development, um, we're doing one of the most expensive investments on the roadway there. It's a really long corridor and it's also our city center. But in this case, there are three different districts that touch West Capital Avenue that that it's important to to have. It's, um, it also keeps the state streets and Old West Sacramento together without splitting them apart. And these are, you know, like other communities, very distinct characters. It's an old, old community in in the city. So it doesn't make sense to see, you know, it split apart by the Park Avenue or, um, just split at all. Frankly, um, the area by Westmore Oaks is the the same size of houses and the same complexion as is the old street. So, um, this also keeps a lot of Bridgeway Lakes and Bridgeway Island. And then brings Old West Sacramento with the Riverfront. And, you know, as we consider, and this is council member with Desmond just mentioned, we talked about the High Street Bridge. But we also are talking about a Broadway bridge that are is going to connect West, or excuse me, oh, 15th Street. And 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 so what you see here is also that there are three different districts that would be on the Riverfront. And that's important as well because we're, that's the big vision for our city, right? Is to develop our Riverfront. So to have, uh, three different council members that would have the opportunity to do a pint about their particular needs in those areas is important. And I think that was addressed by, um, someone else tonight. We don't want to condense, um, or actually, maybe it was in public comment, that, uh, we don't want to condense the Riverfront into just one person's comment or two council members. But it's also important to keep Brighton Broderick together. And, um, you know, when we talk about the rivers, it's very clear that that is a very distinct area of the city. It's one of the two gated communities in our city. It's not only, um, you know, you can't even just say it's separated by a street. It's separated by a freaking stone wall. Okay, a big wall. And and so it is a an affluent area, uh, that often just it's by its mere existence has an impact on our community in so much as that we've been fighting for funding for for Bright Park and find ourselves in a non-competitive position because the, you know, households in the affluent area raise the entire, uh, level of the household across that area. And so I I believe that the rivers could be included with. Well, I guess someone like that. Um, the the rivers included with the Washington District, also with the Bridge District. I feel like those are, they have a lot of common interest. There's a lot of development coming up in those areas. And I think that the complexion, uh, is a little bit more similarly situated. I don't like using Harbor as a west boundary all the way down. So I I suggest and and I see in this map here, um, giving the area see a little bit more of West Capital Avenue. And then the also, this one, the way it deviates from three is that you include more of the area of the port. Because in if you did that, then every single district here has some portion of industrial in there and they're precinct, or excuse me, in their district, uh, which makes it a lot more equitable. See, um, there we go, let's see. Uh, the other thing it says is, um, I know there were some concerns voiced by members of the community of not putting high propensity voters in the same, um, district as very low propensity voters. And by removing, uh, well, by putting two up in grabbing some of the rivers there, that would preserve that opinion because there are a number of low propensity voters that we want to, um, respect, at least for that, um, that position. Uh, I will say that, uh, when you run the, when you remove the rivers from and you include it in the area that's highlighted in yellow, it actually lowers the percentage of Latinos on the north side from, what is it, forty seven point two percent to forty five point six percent. So when you include the rivers in into that district, it lowers the percentage of Latinos. And so I think that's notable. Um, I just, I think that, you know, while there are a variety of different, uh, maps that we can look, that all can fit. For me, this one really does balance so many different aspects. The populations are roughly around the same. They, uh, that we share the city a lot more and really do try and, um, and promote equity. Uh, again, there are, there every map can be tweaked somehow. But I wanted to put this one forth as as the one that I feel most respects the intent of people in the community and, um, a- as much as, um, it can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosso. Can we, um, can we go first to, um, Councilmember Early and then back to you, Councilmember Ocala? So, Councilmember Early had comments first.
Oh, no, no, I already got my comments out. I appreciate you, though.
Hey, good.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Well, um, everyone's talking about the map they like. I have certain maps I like. I like map one, two, one, six, one, eight, one, two, one, six, two, four. But I also liked, uh, draft plan two, you know, it, um, to address this, you know, the rivers, I think, should be part of, um, part of the north. As I said, my my concern is, once again, that there may be, what we create is an affluent district. And this current map shows us that it would be forty two point six percent Latino. Um, so I think that would, that would address the concern that, you know, we're losing Latinos from that map. I also don't like the idea of gerrymandering some of these maps who really gerrymandered. I know we're looking at communities of interest, but there's a lot to the geographic aspect of of this map that I like. You know, I think it's really important to hold communities together and just the boundary lines. Geographic boundary lines seem to make a lot more sense, um, with with this map. I really don't know at all where, you know, any of the council members solve. That's one of the problems I have with some of the maps. I I'd like to, I'd like to know. Um, I think that would also, um, different, definitely have, um, some impact on which maps we're choosing because we certainly don't want, you know, to simply have a map out there that would, um, you know, take into consideration, you know, where council members live to make sure they're in safe districts. I think that's one of the concerns that was raised by not knowing who submitted these maps. So, um, I think that's an important thing to know. And for me, I honestly believe that, um, the communities of interest are almost clustered together by this map. If you look at the, um, preceding page, you know, it gives you the, you know, the 2020 census and, um, I just believe that this would be a very good map. Like everyone is mentioning, you know, we can tweak them, um, but this map to me makes the most sense. It really does. It just seems to be, um, the map that is best represented of the geographic makeup and as well as the, uh, communities of interest, simply knowing where all these, I mean, we've all walked these streets before and we've been campaigning. And these really are communities that, um, seem to, um, you know, share a lot of, of, you know, common demographics that we've been talking about. A lot of these maps are good. You know, like I said, I'm going to continue. I have three more meetings scheduled with community members to hear what they have to say. So, um, Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and let you make your comments. I mean, I've got, I went through every one of these maps with different people and everyone wants something different. I understand it, their concerns. So hopefully, you know, um, within the next few days, I can be much more precise on which map I'm going to prefer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Ocala. I I appreciate all the feedback, uh, that the council members have provided. And, um, uh, Mayor Potemorosco, appreciate the feedback from the chamber who also participated. There's, uh, you know, just been quite a lot of good work to get us to where we're at today, where we actually have maps. We have some ideas, you know, about our community and, you know, you know, just to feedback from residents on, you know, wanting to be able to hold, uh, so their areas of interest. And and, you know, just to appreciate that, you know, we have, um, our council members reaching out to their constituencies, which I have as well. There's been a lot of resistance, I think, from some constituencies where they feel like, uh, for example, the C community, they're spread out all over the city. And, um, they just feel like it doesn't really matter what, you know, what, you know, what the map looks like. They're they're all over the place. They they identify themselves as not in one specific location. But I do see other constituencies which are located in in certain areas. Some are voting members, so, you know, if we canvass, we're not going to be, um, meeting up with them. But there there are constituencies that, um, could be refugees. And, uh, they have some representatives there. There are also, you know, the the Russian Ukrainian members that reside in certain parts of our city, much smaller than, for example, the, um, Latino population that resides in, you know, certain areas of our city where I think that they're, they are more monolingual than they are bilingual from from my experience in working in those areas. And, um, also, you know, taking a look at the growth and what, um, Councilmember Ledesma referenced in, um, you know, the southern part of the city. And, you know, how how is that growth going to impact as we move forward? And I taking a look at the time period, it's going to be quite a bit of time where the next time we take our census, we will have more homes, I think, to be able to take that into consideration. But some of the growth that's going to happen is like over a period of between two to 10 years. So it's not all going to happen at once. But it's going to be significant enough for, you know, whenever these district lines are drawn so that we, you know, we we could take into consideration a little bit. But, uh, you know, hearing from my colleagues, which maps, I think, um, one of the, one of the concerns I do want to take into consideration is breaking up, um, the Riverfront area. That's something I'd like to see is to, um, make sure that there is a balance of a representation by breaking up the Riverfront area. And, um, that's, uh, you know, kind of a little bit of what Plan Two looks like with map, um, the map A and B, you know, allowing for that to to happen. I think it, I think Plan Two also incorporates a little bit of, um, you know, Mayor Potem's, uh, point where everybody shares, um, a little bit of the industrial area in the city. And, um, you know, it's good to hear, though, that it was, um, map three that I think that the, um, Chamber of Commerce was interested in. So I get that point. And, um, I noticed that, uh, indeed, it keeps, um, a lot of the growth in the southern area of the city where, you know, we will have newcomers. And, uh, they they won't know, you know, um, some may know, some may not know. The newcomers will not be as familiar with what's going on in the city. And, um, having representation on council for their, you know, areas of interest, um, in the next 10 years until the lines are redrawn. So I think that helps keep their representation, um, you know, on council through their lens, through their approach. And, uh, I think that helps, you know, when, um, we're looking at Plan Three, D being, you know, just absorbing a lot more of the growth in the southern area. And, uh, you know, that that, um, C does cross over Jefferson. I did, you know, hear your point about trying to use Jefferson as a line. But it does, uh, what it, what C does provide under Plan Three, uh, you know, some of the, you know, the, the schools that those residents live in and also businesses that they will be going to. And in addition, you know, some of the history that's shared over, over the course of time. So I think that keeping them, you know, connected in that way, I think, is really helpful for them. And I don't know how you're going to draw these maps, but I'm just splitting everything up based on what I'm, you know, giving you feedback in. Because I don't have one favorite map, unfortunately. So I will need to go in, maybe sit down with John for about an hour and draw a map. Because I did want to hear some of the feedback from my colleagues before I, I came to a decision. But, you know, I just appreciate that, you know, there are residents, and I was reading, you know, scrolling through public comment. And there are residents, you know, who, like the one who put that one location where all the state employees reside. I don't know how that resident figured that information out, but it is, it is interesting. And that, that public comment is attached in our handout that our Madam Clerk had distributed earlier tonight. So I'll be reading up on that later on as well. But it certainly does not reflect, like, you know, plan three, for example. And I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate you putting the effort, you know, and continuing on as you put the napkin, you know, the placemat, whatever that worked in being able to draw a map, to, to reach out to people who may not be technologically savvy to, to accomplish this. And appreciate that my colleagues put the time and energy into learning about how to do this. And, you know, establishing what, you know, what guidance that you need to be able to move forward in contributing to what would be helping us. And adding in additional time, I, I don't agree right now with cutting the time short. I'd like to have that additional time needed, because I, I think we've kind of set that the May is, is the time. And if we, if we voted early, my concern would be, some people may, you know, and I was telling people that we were going to vote in May. My concern would be that there is some false expectation that we were going to take a little longer. So I'd like to be able to hold to the timeline that we have, only because that's what I've been explaining to the community members, even though we possibly do it a little sooner. So that's, you know, that's my feedback and all of that. Any other thoughts, questions from?
A question just on, in terms of process moving forward. There were a few maps that were referenced tonight by each council member. I can take a closer look at those maps in our program and clean up some of the census blocks. And I can actually label them like draft four, draft five, draft six, and we can kind of add them in terms of our official draft. It seems like the council kind of wanted to uplift those. And, and we can move forward that way if, if you all think that's acceptable.
Yeah, I think, I think that'll work. I think the map that councilmember Alcala, one-two-one-six-one-eight was another one that I identified. I actually identified seven of them, but, but, you know, one-two-one-six-one-eight was, was one that I picked. I don't know, councilmember Rosco had one as well. Did you, you would figure out which ones those were from all of our?
Yes, I was. So I have, I can pull them up as well really quick. But yeah, I mean, I can.
Do you want to name them out? Do you want to just name them right now to make sure we're all on the same page, Joe?
So, yeah, that's what I was thinking, if we can start naming them in a sense and then, and then, you know, it's easier one for you all not to have to spit out all the numbers when you're referring to them. But also the public can kind of know which maps are, are kind of being considered. So let me share my screen really quick.
While Joe's doing this, one of the things you can be thinking about is, maybe a couple of them look extremely similar. And so there's no need to do both. Maybe some have more consensus. So if there are a few that you want to add and a few of the ones that you discussed that, you know, are substantially similar to others, then there's no need to add an infinite number of official draft maps. But what Joe's suggesting is important is that we can go in there to the program and actually clean up any little imperfections in the maps as people drew them in districter to make sure that they're completely compliant, that we have the exact right deviations based on a map that's assigned every census block. And then the public can have a better sense, especially if you continue to have these maps proliferate, that these are the maps that are really being considered and that you want to get further input on. And as was discussed earlier by Scott Rafferty in the public comments, if people in the community are watching this or if they submit a map, it's great for them to submit any other additional written comment or to call in and say, I'm really excited that you've elevated my map or my map was whatever number it is, and this is the reason I drew it that way.
You able to get all those?
I'm almost there. Just got two more to pull up.
Paul, because I don't, I was trying to previously write down all the different maps and all my, my fellow colleagues were saying, I wouldn't really know at this point the nuances between them. So even if they appear similar.
He'll walk through.
Even if he walks through them right now, right? Like, I would want to actually go back and, and explore some of those nuances. So I don't necessarily know, even if they appear somewhere right now and he spends the next two hours walking me through every single one, I would want to actually have the time to explore some of those nuances. So I'm just, I'm just calling that out.
Obviously. So we'll see what they look like when Joe brings them up and if you guys have a sense.
So this is draft map one-one-eight-dino-five, referenced by councilmember Ledesma. And title this one draft map four, because we already have draft map one, two, and three. So again, that's one-one-eight-nine-zero-five.
Are you, are you, are you asking me? Okay.
You can also confirm this is the right one.
Yeah, I like, yeah, this is, yeah, this is, yeah.
And then another one you referenced was one-two-three-one. I think you said two-seven, but I think it was oh-seven.
Yeah, that's similar. You could just keep the first one, because they're both kind of the same, so just.
Yeah.
You can keep the first one. You don't need to have this one.
Hey, I'm, and so that's actually my concern, and maybe it's the data person in me, but I would actually want to know the difference before just throwing something out.
Well, just.
Think it's thrown out.
He's like, just throw it out.
So, yeah, so that's, yeah, the other map isn't going anywhere. But councilmember Ledesma went through kind of a discussion of this map, which was about five minutes. And I think a lot of the public got to see that. So this is the one that will get to be draft four. And there's another one that's almost identical to it that will always still be on the website, and that number was listed as well.
So then me and the public should go back as we're going through right now, because this, this is just the first right pass. But some of these other maps we're going to look at as well. You might have people say on our council, like, oh, you can just throw that out. It looks very similar. So then it'll be on the public end on me, because again, I want to go back and look at all the different nuances between them to figure out. And then the next meeting, I call out, like, oh, you threw this one out, but actually, I think that's probably a better representation of what we heard from the community. Would that be what you would want from me?
Could amend this map to take into the changes that you saw on the other map. It's, it's not like, this isn't an elimination round. This is a.
It certainly feels like that.
Yeah. We've done this in, and we've done this in a ton of jurisdictions, and it is hopefully to try to draw the conversation to maps that are being considered more seriously by the council. And take this map kind of out of the sea of the dozens of maps that are on the public side and bring it in so that the public gets a little more, can pay more attention to it. Yeah.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you, Paul.
This is, this will be labeled draft map four from now on. The next map that we had was one-two-three-three-four-four, referenced by councilmember Rosco. We can label this one draft map five. Is this the right map? Correct? I think I see it now. Yes, okay. Great. So this is, we'll label this as draft map five. Next one, next two were referenced by councilmember Alcala and also Mary Guerrero. So this one, this first one is one-two-one-six-one-eight. And this is the correct map, correct councilmember?
Can you, can you flip back to the other one?
That's correct.
Okay.
The one we just solved.
Just one second. While we're on this one, just one-two-one-six-one-eight. This will be draft map six. And then, okay, the last map that we referenced.
Yeah, just because it looked, okay, so the difference between, this is, again, I'm going to have to spend several hours going through, trying to figure out the difference. The difference between this one and the next one really is the carve-out on top of district one.
That's correct. It looks like to me, just from my eye, there is the rivers area. So this one, this will be draft map six, referenced by councilmember Alcala is, it adds the rivers area to this northern district and then add some of this area above the capital kind of bridge right there to that district. And then it does, there's in this, in this plan, basically, because you're taking out population from this district, this area extends some areas around here. I think this is the railroad tracks, basically, as the main divide. Basically, like Ikea is in this district.
Tough. Thank you.
And the next map was one-two-one-six-two-four. And this is the correct map.
Yes.
And then we can label this one draft map seven. And at this point, those were all the maps that were referenced in addition to the, to draft map two and three. And so if there's anything else people would like to bring up at this point, feel free to do so. Yeah.
As long as you're bringing stuff up. Um, some of those maps in comparison, the draft map, I think, seven, I'm trying to remember draft map, I guess, two, all that already exists. Are those, are similar to, have a book, so I can take a look.
So draft map two, again, those are available on the website. I'll pull them up right now. Those were the ones that we created when we were first doing our initial draft map presentations. And draft two.
So it's, it's kind of different.
Yeah, and then draft three was referenced earlier as well.
Oh, see, that one kind of, wait, is this draft map? This looks the same as.
Three is in the same family as draft four. There are just some minor differences mostly in this area, it looks like.
Well, then you could just throw that out, Joe.
No, you can't, because you see, they are different. I articulated why they are different. Because the difference between, the difference.
You don't have to, councilmember Rosco. I was, I was literally a joke. They, they look very similar. I'm going to go back and do the work. It's like, I was, that's fine.
And then, yeah, you can, I mean, some of these are in the same kind of families. You know, this one, probably in this one, looks similar. But again, we will post these on websites. We'll kind of clean up the census blocks area and we'll make them available on the website so you can kind of flip through as well. In addition to all the, the public maps that we are continuing, continue to receive and things like that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Joe, can you put up the one-two-one-six-two-four? Thank you. Okay. It's hard to see from this vantage point, because I'm not seeing the streets. But does this break up the Broderick neighborhood between one and two?
Sorry, I muted myself. It breaks up, it looks like, right? And I can, I can actually, one second. We also have these kind of maps available that, that allow you to zoom in, so. This one is six-two-four. So you're asking about the divide here?
Yeah, where is the line? What's the, what are those streets?
This looks like Todd Hunter Avenue.
So it does. It breaks up that community and it brings the green in. So, yeah, the Broderick community then would be joined with, let's see, the rivers and then down below, what do we have? Where does that go?
The dividing line is, it looks like the Park Boulevard is the dividing line down here, but all the way to the, to the channel.
Okay, so the Bridge District, the State Street, the rivers and Broderick and are included in this carve-out?
That's correct. In this district, that would be that. And then it looks like Jefferson, kind of this part of Jefferson Boulevard is the dividing point.
And now, is there a way to look at the data from this vantage point, the, the breakdown of ethnicity?
Yes, one second. This is six-two-four. And then if we look at this, this is our citizen voting age population down here. I can zoom in if you'd like.
So.
If you're, if you're wondering just about that district, the district one, that's actually, sorry. Here it is.
I'm having a hard time seeing.
So the Latino population, if that is your concern, would be thirty-eight percent total population and twenty-nine percent citizen voting age population.
So it splits it up. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Joe, I'm sorry. I'm glad you brought that up. I hadn't, I think I got the wrong numbers on it, and I'm sorry. Looking at all these maps, you brought up a very good point. I hadn't realized that, because I was looking at the one where I was hoping there were two Latino districts. And I think instead that was one-one-seven-one-one-six. Is that the one that sort of shows, I mean, it's a huge population here in, in West Sacramento?
One-one-seven.
Yeah.
One-one, I'm sorry. One-one-seven-one-one-six?
Yeah, is that the one? I'm sorry, I think I got my pages mixed up. I pulled them out so I could look at them.
This is one-one-seven-one-one-six.
Yeah, I think that's one I had been looking at.
So would you like me to replace that one from the last one?
Did you give me the numbers on one and two? I'm sorry. Like I said, I.
So this is one-one-seven, one-one-six. And then we were probably considering this one, which is one-one, sorry, let me zoom out. One-one, I'm sorry, one-two-one-six-two-four. So we looked at this, this one. And then you would like the demographic numbers?
Right, on the demographic on the sec, yeah, that.
So forty-two percent total Latino population, twenty-nine percent citizen voting age population.
Okay.
And then in this one, it would have been thirty-eight percent and twenty-nine percent. So this is the voting age population, doesn't change very much, but the total Latino population. And that's, and total Latino population is citizens and people below the age of eighteen.
Okay.
Would you like us to add that map or replace the map? The one-one-seven-one-one-six?
Go ahead and, go ahead and add that map, add it as well.
I will call that one draft.
Yeah, and then I'll got to meet with some folks.
Okay. And if anybody has any questions, John is always available to assist you. And, uh, if anybody has any questions, John is always available to assist you. Um, I know this is, this is, uh, tedious work, but much very meaningful to, um, the outcome of making sure that we accomplish, you know, why, why we are doing this. So, I appreciate everybody, you know, looking at all the level of detail and, um, the presentation you provided to help us understand. Um, you know, just what we need to do as far as making a decision. So, thank you very much. I think, um, I think we're done with that, John. Is that? Any more questions? Are you all good with the maps that were kind of selected and?
Let me, let me just ask Paul, Paul and Joe, sounds like they, they got a lot of feedback right there at the end. Is, are there any questions they might have for you to clarify what they're doing there?
I think we're good. Um, I think we got a lot of great conversation about, uh, the things that you were looking at and concerned about and what you like. And I think hopefully you were listening to each other as well because you're gonna have to get to a point where you're gonna have to eventually vote and have some consensus on these maps. Uh, I hope that when we come back with these additional numbered maps, uh, and hopefully look at any input we get from the community, we can start to hone in. It's kind of a process of building up and then kind of funneling into maybe get to a point where maybe there's two maps you're looking at. Or maybe, maybe you get to a point where the southern part of the city is kind of settled. You kind of know where you're going there and it's really about how you're drawing that northern portion. So, uh, reducing the number of variables will be helpful as we get closer to the, to the consensus.
Thank you. Thank you for providing us, uh, these maps and for the, this was a very, very helpful discussion. I just want to just add that, you know, the, there are a lot of reasons why we came to the table to, to participate in this exercise. And I appreciate, you know, my colleagues who actually took the time to, to take a look at these in advance. Um, the, uh, you know, interest is ensuring that people have an adequate opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. And I'm really concerned about splitting the Brighton-Broderick community, especially since there are such heavy Latino population in that community. I, I feel like, um, the point made earlier with respect to the rivers being part of, um, the north and included does reduce the percentage of Latinos. And, um, my, my concern, especially with one, one, seven, I guess, or one, two, one, six, before was that it was smack dab in the middle. And again, that's one of those things that I think we need to be very conscientious of. Um, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, I will say that the software that you've provided for us to, you know, make the determination of, of which map, you know, all the data that is in there is, um, extremely valuable for us to, you know, make our, our considerations and, um, you know, just, I do have one quick question. When you are speaking to members of the public, is the data a component of the decision-making process? Or is it, or is it really just looking at the, um, visibly looking at, you know, locations?
When the community members are talking about what areas should be together or.
Yeah.
Kind of where their community of interest is, it's, it is a process that has to incorporate all those components. So somebody might say, well, you know, I like, I want everything north to be all in one district. And we have to say, well, you know, uh, that mathematically doesn't work. So, uh, but we do take in those concerns. Um, so it's, uh, it's about balancing. And that's one of the things that we hope that this repetition of public hearings, these hearings, the map, is that we're gonna get to a point where we're gonna understand that relationship between, uh, how we can draw those communities of interest and then what we have to do because of the data. You know, if it wasn't for having to have equal districts, all the districts could be perfectly equal little squares and we could go home. But we have to make sure that these communities of interest can fit within those kind of mathematical requirements as well. So part of this is just balancing all that.
Exactly. That's exactly correct. All right. All right, back to you, John.
That's, that's all I have. Thank you very much for all the great feedback.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, next item, um, is the administrative function, part two hundred, council communications and assignments. Um, so under item eight, do we have any council communications? Council member Alcala.
Thank you. Um, so I'll begin with March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two, uh, the Yolo Local Agency Formation Committee. Yeah, this is on the agenda. Um, it was the commission discussion and direction regarding the fire protection districts, draft governance recommendation for the Yolo LAFCO Municipal Service Review. We received testimony from the public, fire officials and members of the local governing board of the proposed recommendations. No action was taken. On April fourth of the two by two, uh, the city and the school two by two, America and I attended. And the two by two heard a presentation by Yolo County Superintendent of Schools, Garth Lewis, on the upcoming African-American Student Leadership Conference. We also heard an update from the district on their plan to open wellness centers, as I've mentioned before, at each campus to support the mental health and safety of students. That presentation was made by Superintendent Hildreth. And a history of the former school resource officer program was also provided. Uh, lastly, the district provided an update on efforts to support new refugee student families, uh, particularly those, uh, recently immigrated from Afghanistan and Ukraine. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala. Councilmember Ledesma?
Uh, just a quick, uh, note, and I think this may be coming back to us on a, at a council meeting in the future, but I did attend along with you. Madam Mayor, I know you attended our meeting on, look at my notes, uh, the twenty-third, I'm sorry, that was, uh, uh, the sixth, uh, we met with Congresswoman Matsui, asked us to meet, uh, with representatives from the city of Sacramento, um, Councilwoman Jeff Harris, as well as Councilwoman, uh, Katie Valazuela and SacRT, SAC RT Board President Pat Kennedy, as well as representatives from SAC RT, um, Congresswoman Matsui, her staff, and our staff, Jason McCoy was there, uh, to talk about the light rail project. And it was in essence, a, uh, convening to kind of get everybody on the same page. It's at a critical point right now, um, with furthering the application and, um, Sacramento is asking to further, uh, to, to change the route. Um, and RT are asking to change the route, something we are considering, uh, moving away from connecting directly from the Tower Bridge, crossing, uh, up north on, uh, Third Street to going instead south and connecting to the system, uh, via N Street. So that is something that's being worked on, um, and like something that will come back to the council for further deliberation, um, and action. But right now it's just more of a, uh, conversation we had to have to make sure all the entities, most, most importantly SAC RT, uh, was on board. And so the board president, uh, Pat Kennedy was very much, um, uh, supportive of moving forward with the project. So again, we'll have more, Martha, I'm not sure if you have anything to add to it. Um, I, um, appreciate Congresswoman Matsui's convening the meeting to making sure this, uh, part project continues to move forward.
Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. Yes, I agree. That, um, was a very important meeting to, um, reengage with, uh, both, um, you know, the, um, two cities, uh, but also the SACRT board, uh, to find out where we all are, um, on the status of this, uh, modification. I, I will say this, a modi, this modified line does, I think, work in a way that moves people into, and, you know, city, uh, sorry, state, state employees into an area where they can probably commute using this modified, um, line. And, uh, it, you know, received consensus of support from, from the majority that were present. Uh, we were glad to hear that. And so, um, you know, we are, um, sending Congresswoman Matsui back to DC to advocate for more funding. There's, there is an interest, um, on behalf of the, uh, US Transportation Department, um, inquiries about where we stand on this particular issue. And I think she, she felt comfortable enough to say that there is consensus among all, um, the leaders there to, um, you know, continue to ask for the funding and to see what next steps we need to make, um, making sure that this, this can continue. So, and also, um, to Councilmember Alcala's point on the youth, um, African-American Youth Leadership Conference that, um, the, uh, county superintendent, um, Garth Lewis puts together, um, one, one of the asks, um, there are some of us here who have connections, um, uh, is to provide, um, opportunities for youth to earn, um, you know, a, a prize for their participation. So it could be tickets, you know, or it could be, you know, a gift card. Um, so reaching out to your networks, whether it be a gift card to McDonald's or, uh, Starbucks. So kids can earn something to be motivated to enhance their participation, um, as well as any kind of monetary, uh, contribution to, um, help sponsor. So that was one of the purposes of, um, his participation in talking about this, uh, this annual event, which I think is a very successful one for motivating our youth to be more interested in leadership, um, you know, efforts, um, throughout the, uh, county. Uh, on March sixteenth, the SAIC cog board of directors met, um, and, uh, we took a few action items of interest to us. We approved the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three allocation of state transit assistance fund for, um, Sacramento, Serra, Yola and Yuba. And, um, these are regional allocations from state revenues where West Sacramento received approximately four hundred and ninety-five thousand in funding. We also approved the Yolo County Transportation Development Act claim for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, and we approved the state of good repair, um, to Yolo County Transit for two hundred and seventy-six thousand. We also approved West Sacramento's revised portion, the, the quarter cent sales, um, sales, uh, tax, which will provide three point eight million in funding for specified certain projects. Um, we also had a robust discussion to engage and empower and implement, um, it's the in, initiative to establish initiatives throughout the SAIC cog region, which will enhance equitable and justice-based planning process by focusing on community needs and creating, uh, projects that meet them. And the first, um, phase of the power, um, engage and, um, to implement, uh, initiative is focused on developing a framework that will guide the process by coordinating with community-based organizations with strong ties to Black, indigenous and other people of color. And the next step is to engage with communities in partnership with CBOs and then empower the ideation and design of projects. And then implement these projects which are, will be ready for implementation utilizing funds gathered, uh, SAIC cog, state, federal grants or other opportunities. Um, on, on another note, I wanted to say that, um, uh, this is an initiative through the Race Equity and Inclusion SAIC cog, um, created, uh, work group that I'm a part of. And, um, they received an award, um, by WTS. So it's like women in the transportation system. And, uh, they received an award for, um, uh, being able to be creative and engaging in the community in a unique way, um, working with community-based organizations. And it was received by our chair, um, um, Councilmember Bruce Jennings, Rick Jennings and, um, Congresswoman, um, Doris Matsui. So, uh, Councilmember Jennings did, is doing a great job in, um, being our, our wonderful chair. Um, and with that, we have, um, that concludes my, uh, presentation on the assignments. And next will be Council. I'm raising my hand.
Oh, yeah, me.
Councilmember Early, sorry, I didn't.
No, 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 it's okay. I'm going to give you space.
Go ahead. I thought you were, I thought you didn't have anything. Okay, go ahead.
Mine is really, really quick. Um, the Yolo County Housing Authority, um, will be posting, I actually think they probably already have, um, at this point, for a new executive director. Um, they have had an interim, um, for the past year. She is firm and resolute in the fact that she will not take the job and she is moving out of the state. Um, and so we are currently looking for a new executive director. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try to be shorter than Councilmember Early. Um, on March twenty-third, I met with the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District. We received our beautiful State of the District twenty twenty-one. I, uh, would have probably been able to provide that to our council, but I was very sick of the flu at the last meeting and was there as a, not as a panelist, but as an attendee. So I was there, but not there on screen. Um, and then, uh, we also, um, received a bond trustee report from the sanitation district. And that's all.
All right, thank you. We will have, um, we have two council vacancies for, um, the commission. So that includes, um, the recently vacated Arts Culture and Historic Preservation Commission. And, um, we also have had one in the Board of Appeals. They don't meet frequently, but, um, you know, we'll have the, um, clerk, you know, notify you of opportunities. I think we'll, some, you know, ask for additional applications, um, and then notify you of who the additional applicants are. All right, next is Council Calendar.
Madam Mayor, did we make a choice for someone for Park, to fill Park's vacancy?
Yes, we did.
Was that at last meeting?
Nope, that was a few meetings ago.
Oh, and who did we choose?
Um, I can't remember off the top of my head who we chose. I think we'll do some research here. I think, uh, Councilmember Early, you and I went back and forth on that one a little bit, um, some recommendations.
But we settled and agreed.
Let me see if I can find the name, um, on who that was.
No worries, it's fine. We can move on.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure we can, I don't know, I, I think we might have chatted about it, um, just to make sure we were on, on the same page, but okay. Yes.
Good evening. Um, just wanted to make a note that the council calendars that went out in your packet, um, we are adding the, um, the chambers anniversary dinner, the seventy-fourth, seventy-fifth anniversary dinner, and that's on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, from five thirty to nine, and it's down at the Sugar Mill. So that'll be on, um, and you should have all gotten invited and hopefully you're ongoing. So, that's it for me.
Thank you. City manager's report.
Uh, yes, just the, uh, one quick item, um, following up on the, our request to look into, uh, adding a land acknowledgement to our agendas. Uh, we do have staff putting that together, uh, looking at examples in other jurisdictions, mainly, um, starting with across the river in Sacramento. Um, they do something, uh, every meeting. So, uh, we're targeting, um, it would be our, our, one of our May meetings, so possibly the second meeting in May, which is also targeted as our first in-person council meeting in, in nearly two years. Uh, so stay tuned for more information on that. That's just the, you know, uh, circling the calendar for now, but, uh, more to come on that. And then, uh, yeah, next week is spring break in West Sacramento. And I plan to take the week off with my kids and we'll try to be disconnected during that time. Uh, I will be available in emergency situations, of course, but, um, Amanda is doing the same with her family. And so for next week, our deputy city manager, John Robinson, will be, uh, serving as acting city manager, will be your primary point of contact, uh, during that time. So I'll, I'll send out an email to remind you all on Friday. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. We want to see both you and Amanda with suntans, relaxed, refreshed, ready to get back to work. And John will keep you extremely busy with all our constituent.
I'm hoping John has to follow him two weeks off after that.
I was gonna say, Madam Mayor, they said they're vacationing with their children. So there will not be actual relaxation happening.
There'll be something, we'll see.
So John is the one that's gonna get a real vacation here.
Exactly.
Yeah, he's gonna need one. All right, thanks.
Well, that works. Okay, and, uh, city attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Yeah, future agenda item request by council? None, all right. We request a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much, everybody.
Some move.
Second, seconded.
All right, Madam, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Pro Tim Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, with that, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Night.
Night.